Lee Levy has joined us as a board member, Tom Frackus, Marilyn Altman, Daniel Stancheck, myself, one, two, three, or five. So with the five members of board for the evening, we'll begin. And Lee, are you all set to go?
I'm ready.
Okay, proceed.
Hey, our first item according to our agenda is number two, two dash zero, three, one, seven, dash zero, one, Marina Maria Ebner, property located at twenty-one Sable Street. Appeal of Z E O determination that current market value cannot be used and rather market value at the time of initial permit must be applied for substantial improvement to existing single-family dwelling in a flood hazard zone. Property located at twenty-one Sable Street, District Five, Block Eight, five, B, Lot Three, Six. Request, the applicant is appealing the Z E O's determination that the substantial improvement tracking began with initial first permit issued in nineteen ninety-three, and therefore, the market value, appraised value in nineteen ninety-three is the metric for setting the fifty percent improvement budget threshold. The applicant believes the current market value of the dwelling should be the metric utilized for the fifty percent improvement threshold. Look back analysis. Background. In an email reply to a request from a real estate agent for the fifty percent rule, I indicated the following regarding twenty-one Sable Street. Nineteen ninety-three permit for the first improvement to the dwelling, appraised value was fifty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Fifty, fifty percent improvement cap equals twenty-six thousand, seven hundred, five dollars. Subtracting the nineteen thousand, four hundred, forty-five dollars for improvements already made leaves seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars for future improvements until the home must be made flood compliant. This flood tracking method applied to the subject property and all properties within the flood hazard zone is based upon the definition referenced in section one, one, eight, dash, one, one, zero, zero, flood hazard zone of the Norwalk Building Code Regulations. Should I read the market value analysis? I'll continue then. Market value. The market value of a structure shall be determined by an independent appraisal by a licensed professional appraiser prior to the start of the initial repair or improvement, or in the case of damage, the value of the structure prior to the damage occurring. Substantial improvement. Any repair, reconstruction, or improvement of a structure, the cumulative cost of which equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure, either before the start of construction of the improvement or repair is started, or if the structure has been damaged and is being restored, therefore, the damage occurred, including the cumulative cost of improvements taking place after the original effective date of these regulations, April twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-eight. This term includes structures that have incurred, quote, substantial damage regardless, regardless of the actual repair work performed. For the purpose of this definition, definition, substantial improvement is considered to occur when the first alteration of any wall, ceiling, floor, or other structural part of the building commences, whether or not that alteration affects the external dimensions of the structure. The term does not, however, include either any project for improvement of a structure to comply with existing state or local health, sanitary, or safety code specifications, which have been previously identified by the local code enforcement official and which are minimum necessary to assure safe living conditions, nor any alteration of a historic structure listed on the National Register of Historic Places or Estate Inventory of Historic Places, provided that the alteration will not preclude the structure's continued designation as a historic structure. Mended effective twelve, twenty-four, twenty-ten, effective seven, eight, twenty-thirteen. The most recent amendment set the look back period for April twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-eight, which was when the flood regulations first adapted into the zoning regulations. The intent of the flood regulations is to bring the dwellings into flood compliance. Once a home has been raised and remains flood compliant, there is no restriction on the cost improvements that can be made. To be clear, this is not a staff member interpretation, nor a single instance application. This is the same method of flood improvement tracking that all zoning staff have consistently applied in the five years of my employment with P and Z. I have attached three memos from longer tenured staff attending to this consistent methodology. In addition, I've included the legal opinion memo from Corporate Counsel Mario Coppola dated October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty. This was around the time I became acting Z E O. This method was sought in part to conform, confirm legality of the continued application of the standards utilized by my predecessors. Analysis and findings. If this appeal is upheld, then the Z E O has found an error of determining that market value is set at all the time of initial improvement, zoning staff must adopt a new method of applying only current market value in all cases for flood tracking. Such a revised practice would put continued unnecessary risk to property and life. Among the more recent flood events, Storm Ida devastated Norwalk on September second, twenty-twenty-one with seven and a half inches of rain. There were a hundred and forty-three properties that were reported damaged to city officials. These storm events highlight the urgency of bringing dwellings into flood compliance sooner rather than later. FEMA allows and encourages towns to adopt higher regulatory standards. The fifty percent rule can be adjusted to forty or thirty percent, or tracking costs can be set for any specific time period. FEMA empowers the communities to set their own standards to be as stringent as desired, provided those standards are consistently applied. Attachments. Historic amendments to flood hazard regulations. Memo from Alexis Chertetti, Senior Environmental Official slash P and Z Assistant Director. Memo from John Hayducky, Deputy Zoning Inspector. Memo from Steve Kleppen, Director of P and Z. Memo from Mario Coppola, Corporate Counsel. Agreed. Andy?
I'm sorry, there was actually a revised version of this, but it just goes on. It's okay. It just goes on to highlight. It's just an additional attestation that all of these memos support from the various, from all of city staff supports this methodology.
Okay.
I just gave some highlight statements.
Okay, thank you. Don't make me read it again.
Let me ask a quick question. I really don't want any long answers. Has everybody had a chance to read through the material? And you have? Okay.
Yes.
Good, good. All right, Liz, do you want to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Mr. Levy for reading in the staff memo. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at the law firm of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford, and I represent the property owner and appellant Maria Ebner. Two housekeeping matters. One, initial mailings were sent to budding property owners in connection with the original hearing that was scheduled for March seventeenth. Those were sent around May, March third or fourth, and the green cards were returned back to staff. And the next notice of tonight's hearing was sent to neighbors on or about May fifth, and a packet with the green cards that had been received as of today, or copies of letters for which green cards have not been received, was also returned to staff this morning, so that should be part of your file. I would also like to request confirmation that you received our responsive memorandum that was dated May thirteenth and sent to staff May thirteenth, in which we reviewed and responded to the various memos that staff and Corporation Council had issued, like that to be made part of the record. As indicated, the appellant is Maria Ebner. She is on the, and participating in the meeting tonight, along with her partner Molly Mayo. And if you have questions of them, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer them. The property is at twenty-one Sable Street, District Five, Block Eighty-five, B, Lot Thirty-six. It is Zone C Residence. It's improved with two structures, both constructed prior to the enactment of zoning in nineteen twenty-nine. One is about seven hundred eighty square feet. The other is about four hundred twenty-three square feet. They're both legally non-conforming. We do, in fact, appeal the zoning enforcement officer's January fifth decision that current market value of a structure cannot be used for the purposes of determining substantial improvement, and we'll go into our rationale for that position in just a minute. As Ms. Maldonado's memorandum indicated, the nineteen ninety-three value, which is thirty years old, is the value that has been established in connection with improvements to Ms. Ebner's property. That value based and with fifty percent reduced from it brings it to twenty-six thousand, seven oh five. Nineteen thousand, four hundred fifty-five must be reduced, since those improvements were in, were constructed in nineteen ninety-three, leaving my client with seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars to work with if she decides to improve her property. If she does, if she exceeds that seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, she must not only elevate the structure to meet FEMA requirements, but also fill in the basement. My clients submit this appeal to contest the validity and appropriateness of the zoning enforcement officer's decision, as we believe the, the decision was issued in error. This is not a personal criticism, but a disagreement with a practice that significantly impacts property owners, treats neighbors vastly differently, one to the other, and has resulted in a consequential policy shift. As former zoning enforcement officer that many of you may remember, Jim Bradley once stated, "We can certainly agree to disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable about it, and I see no reason why this hearing will not continue without anyone being disagreeable, particularly me." Apologize. It's calling my end. Sorry about that. That's the home phone. I apologize. Our appeal was time, finally, was filed on January eighteenth, so it's deemed timely and certainly ripe, because any decision order or requirement may be appealed, not just the denial of a permit as stated in the zoning regulations. We have reviewed the city's memos and presume that you have, as I said before, reviewed our responsive memorandum dated May thirteenth. As stated in the appeal, we submit that the regulations do not appear to contain specific language or reference to an original or prior, prior market value tied to a previous permit when establishing market value and its relationship to substantial improvements to properties within the coastal zone. Market value, as you know, is a price that a ready, willing, and able buyer will pay. As defined in the regulations, market value shall be determined by an independent appraisal by a licensed professional appraiser prior to the start of the initial repair improvement, or in the case of damage, the value of the structure prior to the damage occurring. FEMA has identified various acceptable estimates of market value, which include an independent appraisal or property values established by a local tax assessor. FEMA also notes that if structures have not been maintained, maintained or have deteriorated over time, then the pre-improvement or pre-damage market values are the values as the date of the application for permit. For the applicant's proposal, however, the structure has been not maintained and not deteriorated, so pre-improvement market value should not be applied. It does not seem logical or fair to us to use market value from a prior time, some thirty years ago, to establish the values moving forward to determine substantial improvement. Despite the representation in five zoning staff memoranda that market values at the time of prior permits have always been the values used to establish substantial improvement for subsequent permits, the documentary evidence in the zoning department files post-superstorm Sandy, a storm event that caused more than three hundred and sixty million dollars worth of damage in Connecticut, do not support this contention. In fact, the shift in application and interpretation of this section of the regulations was apparently implemented at the staff level sometime after two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen, and not via revisions to or clarifications of the zoning regulations adopted by that, by the zoning commission. The staff memos have not been clarified, leaving the impression that their representations are the only representations to be applied. Per my letter of May thirteenth, which I hope all of you have read, I reviewed more than thirty permits issued from November two thousand twelve through November two thousand fourteen, which consistently revealed that market values at the time permits were sought post-superstorm Sandy were used, either based upon the assessor records at that time, or by appraisals prepared by certified appraisers and accepted by the city. For example, a property owner I represented in Harborview had obtained permits in two thousand, in two thousand four. In two thousand thirteen, when this property owner applied for permits to repair superstorm Sandy damage, the two thousand thirteen market value of the structure, not only from the assessors' records, but from a certified appraiser, were the documents considered, followed, and accepted. At no time was there any request or requirement by the staff that an appraisal from two thousand or two thousand four to establish market value of the structure was presented or considered. In fact, none of those files that I reviewed in that two-year time period where previous permits were issued contained appraisers or assessors' information from prior years. Instead, they contain updated appraisals as of the date of the permit. Furthermore, FEMA's guide to questions about substantial improvement, which was provided to you, notes that the market value must always be based on the condition of the structure before the improvement is undertaken. There is no language requiring a prior value to be established used, or a market value at the time of the last improvement. We submit to you that the current interpretation represents a policy determination that while arguably more appropriate, rests with the zoning commission to decide, as your Assistant Corporation Council advised, since the zoning commission is vested with the authority to set policy, not the staff. Such policy is created through the drafting of regulations, presentation of such regulations at a public hearing where interested parties may share comments, including residents, architects, appraisers, staff, and others. That is the hallmark of good and open government, and that is what this process is about before you this evening. We all agree that repairs since nineteen seventy-eight for non-compliant structures must be totaled, then deducted from the market value of the structure. We do not contest that, and Attorney Coppola's two thousand twenty memo pointed that out. However, however, his, his memo did not state that market value at a time of a prior permit be used. Rather, he suggested that the zoning commission consider amending its regulations to make the accumulation period less restrictive. In other words, possibly consider a reset period like other municipalities have. This would allow homeowners to enjoy the appreciation and value of their most valuable asset, their home. Although the zoning regulations note start of construction for the purposes of substantial improvement, meaning the first alteration of any wall, ceiling, floor, or other structural part of the building, FEMA defines substantial improvement as any reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition, or any improvement to a structure that has taken, that has taken place before the start of the improvement, and not the start of construction of the first or previous or original improvement. We disagree with the restrictive interpretation by the zoning staff that initial repair means the first or the original repair ever conducted, once a structure fails to comply with flood regulations, as that is, that would be inconsistent with FEMA's guidelines. As previously noted and confirmed by a review of files post-superstorm Sandy, repairs and renovations to dwellings were directly tied to market value established by appraisers or through the city's assessors' records at the time those permits were sought, and current appraisals and assessors' values were required to be submitted to establish those values. Homeowners were not required to submit analyses or market values for prior years at the time previous permits were obtained. The same principles should apply today. In fact, after superstorm Sandy, a pamphlet titled, quote, "General in zoning information for storm damage repair," was distributed to Norwalk homeowners seeking permits after that storm event. In connection with permits, that pamphlet identified that homeowners were to provide a detailed cost of the estimated repairs, a total of all prior improvements, and a current market value appraisal. The restrictive interpretation that the staff has applied would dissuade or prevent homeowners from undertaking work because of the, because if the improvement exceeds fifty percent of market value from a prior time, which could be decades, such as in my client's instance, and which in all likelihood it will, a property owner would be forced to elevate dwellings, which is expensive, time-consuming, and complicated. Lifting houses may require pile drivings to support the weight of the dwelling. Foundations may need to be modified to add floor flood vents to achieve FEMA compliance, or be reconstructed to accommodate the elevated dwelling. In most instances, mechanical systems would need to be relocated above the minimum flood elevation plus one foot, which would likely require new equipment, along with structural and configurational revisions to the first floor of the dwellings. And if existing basements are more than crawl spaces, they would need to be filled in. Many of these required changes would require substantial expenditures that may be beyond the financial means of homeowners. The current application of the fifty percent rule may also result in situations that will achieve the goals stated by staff of bringing non-conforming structures into FEMA compliance. One, some property owners will not undertake any repairs or upgrades since they are, since they are at the fifty percent and cannot afford this, the additional expense of achieving compliance by elevating their dwelling. Some property owners may undertake only, only modest repairs up to whatever that amount of, that amount is left, such as the seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars that my clients have available to them, so their dwellings will still remain non-compliant. Some property owners may decide just to sell the property. Others may decide to undertake repairs without securing permits and hope that their work is not discovered. Again, that will still keep a, a structure non-compliant. Some, however, may have the financial ability to undertake repairs, which would include elevating their dwellings. As you can see, this could lead to substantially different result neighbor to neighbor. Here's a hypothetical. Homeowner A lives in the coastal zone. Her dwelling was built in nineteen seventy-five and is not FEMA compliant. In nineteen ninety, the market value was a hundred thousand, so she could undertake fifty thousand in renovations. She pulled permits and undertook forty-five thousand dollars in renovations, leaving five thousand dollars. Fast forward to two thousand twenty-two, the market value was now four hundred thousand, but based upon, based upon the assessors' information and appraisal. But under the staff's application of the regulations, she could only undertake five thousand dollars in renovations. As a result, she wouldn't even be able to install a new roof unless she elevates the house and fills in the basement. Compare that to this hypothetical. Homeowner B's house was also built in nineteen seventy-five and doesn't comply with FEMA. But unlike homeowner A, homeowner B has not had any renovations done since the house was constructed. Today, the market value also is four hundred thousand, so that homeowner, homeowner can undertake two hundred thousand in renovations before it has to elevate the basement. Such a wildly different result cannot be what FEMA or the zoning regulations contemplate. The current appraisal of the, of the city of Norwalk's assessors' records lists my client's property, the structure value, at a hundred and ninety thousand. So we submit that fifty percent of that hundred ninety thousand, or ninety-five thousand, minus the nineteen thousand, four hundred forty-five of improvements in nineteen ninety-three, should leave the my client approximately seventy-five thousand dollars to work with, and not just seven thousand, two hundred and sixty. Using current market values minus repairs since nineteen seventy-eight would be a more just and equitable result, rather than limiting the appellant or any other person to, to a, a number based upon prior permits and prior market values. Based upon the foregoing, we believe that the, our appeal should be sustained, and current market values should govern in determining the amount of substantial improvements that can be undertaken, as it has been consistently applied in connection with the most significant storm event in Connecticut in years. We respectfully submit that it may be proper for the Z B A to suggest clarify to the zoning commission that it clarify and codify this interpretation through the promulgation of regulations before that board. That concludes our presentation. We look forward to questions and comments from the board and from the public.
Let's resume. Everybody's ready to ask questions if you've got them. Go ahead, Lee, if you have one.
Okay, well, I've got numerous questions. Ms. Suchi, what is, what plans do your clients have for this property?
At this point, Mr. Levy, we, they, they ceased proceeding with what any plans they wanted to do because they were confronted with having only seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars to work with before having to elevate the structure. So that's, they, they stopped moving forward with plans because of that limitation.
Okay, even, even though the structures are diminutive in size?
Exactly. You're still left with seven thousand dollars. How, what, what can be done for seven thousand dollars? Virtually nothing, without then having to spend upwards of probably a hundred thousand to elevate that one structure before they even proceed with any other improvements to it.
How long have your clients owned the property?
Um, hold on just a minute. I have that right here. They purchased property in twenty sixteen. Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen.
Yes.
So when they purchased the property, they were aware of FEMA regulations and the difficulties involved?
I, I would disagree that they were aware of the FEMA regulations, since at the time they purchased the property, they had no plans to make any changes.
But they knew they were buying property in a flood zone.
I believe that's probably the extent of their knowledge of what, what the property, what the.
Well, my, my comment to that is they didn't do their due diligence.
Well, respectfully, Mr. Levy, if no one has any plans to make changes or upgrades to the property at the time they purchase it, they would have no need or reason to investigate this aspect of the zoning regulations. For example, I bought, I bought my house in nineteen ninety-four. I didn't make improvements to my house for nearly eighteen years. I had no reason, I don't live in, in Norwalk, but I had no reason to investigate what I could possibly do, since I wasn't in a position to consider that, either financially or otherwise. So neither was my client.
Well, I think in the most simplest terms, I know homeowners that have bought property without a survey, and so they actually don't know the extent of their holdings and other limitations to their property. That's not doing their due diligence to understand what they own.
Okay, do you have a further question, Lee?
And I'm working toward it. Let, let other people ask questions.
Another board member with a question? Yes, Tom, unmute yourself. There you go. Now you went right back in muted. You might have hit the button twice.
About now, better?
That's better. You got it.
Was there an underwriter involved here for as far as insurance goes in twenty sixteen?
Because this was, you know, if you this property was to be insured, was there a policy in place knowing that it is in a flood area?
I don't have the answer to that question. Perhaps my client can answer it, but I do not have the answer to that.
May I just jump in? So hello, good evening, everybody.
Hello.
This Maria Ebbner. I'm the property owner of twenty-one Sable Street. And just to clarify your questions, my wife and I, we moved from Brooklyn, New York, and I'm originally from Austria. I'm a professor at Fordham University. And this is the first purchase that I've done here in Connecticut. I moved from Nashville, Tennessee. And we did do our due diligence. I was very well aware of moving into a flood zone district. And what we were aware of was the use of the fifty percent rule by FEMA using current market value. What we did not know in two thousand and sixteen is that the change of interpretation of current market value was going to be based on our permit being pulled from nineteen ninety-one, changing our initial seventy-five thousand dollars availability of budget to use for improvements, repairs, or maintenance down to seven thousand dollars, which leaves me right now in desperate desperate need to repair my roof, and then I'm done. If I am not able to use any more money, my current market value will never change from here on going forward. We will always use the amount from nineteen ninety-one. And if that is the case, my question to you as a board also is, what about my taxes? Will my taxes be based on the current market value of my structure? Or from nineteen ninety-one? I would love to have taxes from nineteen ninety-one moving forward. I hope that answers some of your questions.
I want to make it clear where I'm coming from. I established my practice of architecture thirty-five years ago. And one of the first projects I did involved a home in a V-zone in Greenwich. And I was literally thrown into the deep end on that project. And understanding the FEMA regulations was essential from the beginning. I have worked in five other municipalities in New York and Connecticut dealing with FEMA regulations. And it's my understanding that it is the zoning enforcement officer's job to enforce the FEMA regulations as they have been presented and slightly modified by each municipality. And I find this interpretation to be consistent within those five municipalities.
Anybody else with a
Yeah.
comment of the board, only the board? Maria, do you have something you wanted to add further to your explanation?
I I wanted to say something. This is Molly, Maria's Maria's partner. So when we started looking into renovating the house, which was earlier this year, uh, we got an architect involved. We got a very well-known realtor involved. And we even had an email from Tammy Maldonado herself saying that that our ability to renovate our house would be based on FEMA regulations. And that wasn't until, I think, three or four weeks later, that that number was retracted to say that 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 the current value of of the property would not apply, that you guys were going back to the first time a permit was pulled. So that was a conflict. So when you said we didn't do our due diligence, we did do our due diligence, but it seems like the policy had changed recently, where even our own architect wasn't even aware of these these new laws until very recently.
Well, I I don't know if it's a new law, but I don't know how consistently it's been applied. And the job of the zoning enforcement officer, who is sometimes unpopular because they do their job, is to follow the regulations. Uh, it's not the same thing when we vary things, when we set aside pieces of the zoning code in part or in total for various reasons. And this is an appeal, and the appeal is, did the zoning enforcement officer make an error? There may have been other errors by other zoning enforcement officers, but that doesn't, you know, two wrongs don't make a right. Remember that one? So I just don't think there is an issue here with her making an error. I personally, I detest the particular method we're using. I think it's just inappropriate. And I think the zoning commission should change it immediately.
And I think that's the job of the zoning commission
That's what I said.
than the ZBA.
Yeah, it is not our job to promulgate a regulation, enact a regulation. We just follow them, particularly in the case of an appeal. So with that in mind, the fairness or unfairness is not the question at hand. The question at hand, did the zoning enforcement officer make an error? And I, of everything I've read, I haven't seen that she has.
If I may, Mr. Conroy and Mr. Levy, the very crux of this argument relates to the the change in the way in which this regulation was interpreted. And the the prior zoning enforcement officer's interpretation was one particular way. And then at some point in time, based upon conversations apparently at a staff meeting, not the promulgation of new regulations that went to public hearing, where people could opine and and share comments, a new interpretation seems to be what has what has emerged. That is not, that is a policy decision. And that is not a decision within the purview of the zoning staff. That is something that the zoning commission, as you both aptly mentioned, should be undertaking by virtue of creating new regulations that can then be adopted and be consistently applied and be clear to everyone, whether it be a homeowner who's buying a home for the first time or design professionals who experienced the prior application of the regulation, and then are now confronted years later with something slightly different. That is one of the one of the rationales that we suggest why this appeal should be upheld, that there has been a change that's so significant that it results in a policy decision that is outside the scope of the the staff's authority. And again, I'm not saying this to, it's not in a way to be rude or or offensive to staff. It's that's just the the goal of the zoning commission and their their authority is to enact regulations and set policy. And it's the staff to abide by that policy and to guide the commission when it comes to new regulations that they are considering.
Yeah, Liz, I thank you for that, but I do believe she followed it. I don't see any language in either the FEMA regulation, which does allow the city to set stricter standards, or in the standards that the city has set. There may be unintended consequences, and there may be some weird things that have gone on. But the interpretation that the zoning enforcement officer made, I think, was correct. I don't see an alternate language existing in it that says you can do some other method of accumulation.
I just would wonder then, then and how do you square the prior application after the state's largest storm event, in which, as I I've indicated to you time and time again after superstorm Sandy, current market values with current appraisals was the method used? How do you square that against a different interpretation now?
Liz, I don't have to because we're not a court of equity. They're basically administrative judges, and we have to figure out whether or not the zoning enforcement officer made an error. I don't believe she made an error. Do I think that the the code is the code I would want in my city? No, it's not the code I want in my city. I want to see it changed immediately. Uh, but I don't think the zoning enforcement officer made an error.
Understood.
Andy, at this point, there is one person with their hand up, but if you want to give the opportunity to the public now?
May I ask a question?
Yeah, that's good. Marilyn, you want to go ahead with?
Ms. Succi, I'm just curious. I mean, so if this is a problem that where can you go from here? One of the questions I had initially reading this was that it seemed like this was a policy question, and I wasn't sure why it ended up in our lap. Uh, and Andy, to what, you know, to your point, there is honestly, I I know that there's discrepancy in how this has been applied. I I live near the water. I was here with Sandy. I think there are people that had it applied differently as Ms. Succi, you you have cited. So what is the option for your client?
But we're not in a position to cure that. For instance, we're not going back in time and picking up the ones that Liz might point out to us were might have been an error and then and then reviewing them and seeing if they were an error. That's not what we're going to do. We're going to figure out whether the CEO, Tammy Maldonado, made an error and therefore the appeal should be granted, or didn't make an error, and therefore the appeal should not be granted. And it doesn't, it's not a fairness issue. It isn't an issue of whether we think this is right or wrong, because I obviously think it's wrong, a bad policy in my opinion. Um, very bad, not just bad, way over the line bad. Um, and I think the explanation that, you know, FEMA would like us to be more restrictive when we can be, because that puts more of the housing stock in a position to survive a storm. Well, that's Jim Dandy. But over time, that's the only way it can happen, and it can't be too restrictive because if it is, it becomes abusive. And I just think this is way too restrictive. This is ridiculous. But the fairness issue isn't when we decide. We decide, did she make a mistake or did she not?
Well, simply because the current the the current application is the one that is being used, doesn't make that application correct either. I I would submit to you again that fair market that market value is the value that a ready, willing, and able buyer will pay today. And that market value should be the value established by an appraiser of today's values, not an appraisal that dates back in some instances thirty or forty years. And it is a question of fairness.
Well, Liz, hold on one second. You're making a case I think is not correct. There is a variance among the towns in Connecticut, one hundred sixty-nine of them, as to how they apply this. The ones down near the water or the rivers are for most important. And they vary from nothing to five years to ten years accumulation. And so the market value they're going to pick is at the beginning of the accumulation period. You know that. So to say we should be using today is isn't consistent across the state of Connecticut.
Oh, it's it's really not relevant what other towns and cities do. What I suggested to you was the market value during the the time period after superstorm Sandy did not relate back to a first or original permit. And it should not relate back to a first or original permit today. It should be today's market value, fifty percent of that, then deduct from that fifty percent all permits that have been pulled since that nineteen seventy-eight date. And then that property owner is left with a slightly, my client, for example, would be left with, instead of seven thousand dollars, about seventy-five thousand dollars.
I understand your point, but I just that that's not the even way it's applied. And yes, it does matter what else is done in the state. I just think that this particular method we're using in Norwalk needs to be changed, and the accumulation period reduced drastically. And you might make that argument if you ever go to the zoning commission to represent your client, that there should be a change in the zoning regulation that you would like to see current market value used. Valid argument, but it's not, that's not the one in play.
In answer to Commissioner Altman's question, you asked, what option does my client have? Well, if you were to deny the appeal, one of the options would be to present an application to the zoning commission to re redraft the regulations to either specify current market value or end or a limitation on the the duration of time for which there's a reach-back period. So the next opportunity or option would be to submit an application to the zoning commission to clarify this issue.
I think you're right. That would be exactly what I think should be done, but we're not there yet, and I'm just one of five, so. Um, we have to proceed. Any further questions or comments from the public or questions from the public?
I can open up to the public. We do have a few hands up. So if you're on the call and you'd like to participate, please raise your hand, or if you're dialed in on a phone, plus a star nine. And then they'll raise your hand. The first one we have is Nora King, and just state your name and address for the record. And you just have to unmute yourself.
Sorry. Hi, everyone. Hi, Andy. I haven't seen you in a while.
Hello.
So, um, I want
Who's talking?
Nora King.
Hi.
Nora King from seventeen Covewood in Norwalk. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm a former common counsel person. I actually served with Andy, zoning and planning. And, um, when I was on the zoning commission, I often fought for changing, um, this rule, because I feel I'm an appraiser by trade, so this is what I do for a living. And I feel like Norwalk has one of the most restrictive um, and unfair um, FEMA rules in the area. And I think it actually has done a lot of destruction to the shoreline community with these rules, because what's happened is, in order for people to comply, they've either had to sell their house, they've had to tear their house down. And what that leads to is building huge minstrelcities on the water. So it would be so much better to let people renovate, work with the existing structure, and maintain some of the integrity of the shoreline than what has taken place in the last few years. And for whatever reason, Steve Kleppen has not been open to the idea of, um, you looking at what other towns in the area do, like they reset it every five years. They do use current market value. They are not using, going back. When I heard that you guys were starting to do this, or this is how Tammy interpreted it to be, I don't interpret it to be that way. So and a lot of these people who have bought are grandfathered in. They bought under the way the zoning department looked at it at that time when they purchased the property. And now you're trying to like reset or make their properties worth less, or you're forcing them to knock down a house and rebuild it and build a bigger one. And, you know, bigger is not necessarily better. And, you know, we all understand what's going on with the cost of building materials today, the cost of building these big structures that are taking the, you know, the you haven't, you know, nothing is absorbing into the land anymore, because all the land is being filled with big houses in the waterfront communities in Norwalk. So, um, you know, I understand what Andy Andy is saying, that he doesn't see that that's how it was interpreted. As somebody who sat on both boards, I see it as it was always reset to today's current market value. And the fact that you are going back to where the actual house is built is doing a disservice to people. And I think if you are going to stick with that rule, it should be for people, since whenever Tammy Tammy made that interpretation, and those people back in time should be grandfathered in, because I don't. And you're right, it's not a fairness issue, but you are playing with, you know, there was a gentleman here, Lee, who was talking about um, doing your due diligence and everything like that. Well, you don't change the rules without grandfathering in the people that have already done or have done things in the past. Um, so, you know, I would hope as a zoning board of appeals, and, you know, especially Andy, you 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 know your way around the city of Norwalk, that, you know, this is something that Steve Kleppen should be held to the fire for, to make changes that are in the best interest of Norwalk, and having these strict rules are not in the best interest of Norwalk. They are not. I live in Roway, and I see what these big houses have done to our shoreline, and it is not pretty. So knocking things down and building and raising is not necessarily the best answer. And I kind of applaud these homeowners for coming out and doing the fight, because I think, you know, they bought it with the understanding that that is how Norwalk looked at things. And when they purchased the house, that was that was acceptable. People did it all the time. Up until, I don't know what day it was, that Tammy made the interpretation of the rule, but for years, that's how it was always done in the city of Norwalk. So, you know, whatever day it was, anybody before that should be grandfathered in.
Thanks, Nora.
You know, for listening to me, and, you know, I would like to help if there's any way I can help to help change some of those laws. But when I was on the zoning commission and planning, it was talking to a brick wall with Steve Kleppen regarding changing the flood zones.
Why don't you draft a letter and send it in with your ideas and how to remedy it?
Sure.
Because that's how things change, is people, particularly people that are knowledgeable, suggest a change that is much fairer than what is currently in place.
Yeah, perfect. I will do that. Thank you. It was nice seeing you.
Thank you. Next person?
All right, attorney Blank.
Good, good evening, you guys.
Good, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Adam.
Great, thanks. And, and if, am I, can, would I be able to share my screen in a minute, Michelle?
Uh, sure. Give me a sec.
I couldn't make out what Adam was saying. Anybody help me out here?
He wants to share his screen.
Tell me why you want to share your screen, Adam. Okay, Adam, tell me why you want to share your screen.
I, I'd like to show the, the regs that we're talking about.
Adam, I think we've read all the regs.
Yeah, we have read and read and read.
And read it into the record.
Yeah, so I, no, that's not appropriate. Go ahead and give a comment if you wish or a recommendation, but we're not going to go through a lesson on what the regulations say.
Okay, okay. So again, Adam Blank, I live at forty-nine Bartlett Avenue here in Norwalk. I, I am an attorney. Does appear before this board and others for clients. I'm not here on behalf of any client tonight. I'm not being paid for my time. I'm just here because I have some strong feelings on this issue and it does come up quite frequently with clients. I, and I, I, I do, I do think, listen, I, I'll abide by your, your prohibition on me presenting the, the regs or sharing my screen. I, I, I think I have a right to do that, but I, 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 I won't.
Remember, Adam, we don't promulgate regulations. So I think the appropriate body to hear that would be the zoning commission. But if you're applying about the appeal being presented tonight, then that would be appropriate for you to continue.
Yeah, a, a, all that I want to discuss is the appeal. The, the, as was sort of mentioned, so right, so FEMA sets the, the, the general rule and then allows the zoning boards amongst the different communities in the state and across the country to set the regulations. And, and Norwalk's done that. And in Norwalk's regulation, they use very specific phrases that are defined terms for start of construction at which, which triggers substantial improvement. Start of, start of construction is listed as, as the date that a, that the date that the building permit is issued. And that's what's triggering the, the interpretation today, that, that that sets your market value forever. But a, as, as those of you, I'm sure all understand and know, when you go in to do a construction project, there is a start of construction and a building permits issued. At some point in time, you complete that construction project and you obtain ACO. And construction ceases, construction ends. And if at a later point in time, you wish to start a new construction, you go and you get a new building permit. And under the existing regulations
But Adam, Adam, I know where you're going with this, but Adam, the city attorneys have said it's cumulative. So even though you did a little construction per year and then went five and did none, and then did another project for a year and then went another five years and did not. Unfortunately, the way it's written, it's cumulative.
Well, I, I, I know, but I don't disagree. I, I agree it's cumulative. And I think, I think under the reg that you, you're going to have various starts and ends of construction. It can be cumulative. And I think under the reg, I think it would be fair to interpret it as, as Liz has said, where it, it accumulates, but it always accumulates with respect to the market value at the time that the current building permit is being pulled. Not into some historical time period. Or the, the other way of doing it too, which, which fits under the reg because there is some ambiguity in the reg. I don't think it goes as far as, as what, what your Z E O has, has, has interpreted, but another way of doing it would be by saying, which again, I think is supported by the reg itself, which is that if, if you pull a permit and your, your house is worth a hundred thousand dollars, you've got fifty thousand dollars essentially to spend towards the fifty percent rule. If you only use twenty-five thousand dollars of it, you've used up half of your allotment. Twenty-five percent of
Adam, I truly believe you would be better served by making this argument in front of the planning and zoning commission. We have no control over that.
Adams, I understand, Leah, I understand Adam's argument.
But I I do too. And I agree with parts of it.
Give me a minute. I spent the afternoon looking at that very thing. I wondered about the dating of the market value assessment. And I, I agree with our city attorneys. It is back at the initial bond of change to the structure. And all that stuff's very well defined. And I just think it's, it's a lousy set of regulations and it really needs to be changed right away. But I don't think the Z E O erred, and that's the point of an appeal.
Exactly.
Yeah, so look, I, 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 I hear you. I, and I, I mean, we have a difference of opinion. I, I also will tell you, and it's not a surprise. You've got a memo from the director that, 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 that the zoning staff is not interested in considering a zone change for this. So it's going to, it takes quite an effort by an applicant to try to go through this process over objections from staff to having it considered. So I don't, I don't think it's likely that we're going to be seeing a zone change, a reg change on this issue in the, in the near future. And, and which leaves it to appeals to you and then appeals to court is the only, the only option for homeowners, which is usually cost prohibitive.
But the appeal to us really, it's, it's not, it's the point of what I'm saying is, did the Z E O make a error or did the Z E O not make an error? And that really boils down to reasonableness. Wasn't her interpretation reasonable, given the set of facts and the regulations? And in my view, it was. Now, I'm one of five people. Other people may not agree with me. But I think it was reasonable. Do I think the regulation needs some fixing? It definitely does. And the commission does the fixing, not the staff. The staff assists. And it executes. There are the executive branch for this, within the executive branch of the city. And the legislative branch can also push us along through its recommendations. But I, I don't think that that's the issue at hand. The issue at hand is did the C E O err?
Andy, even if we think that the Z E O did err, that doesn't clarify what then happens next.
No, doesn't.
So that doesn't give somebody, yeah.
No, the issue remains unsolved. I think the Z E O officer did it correctly, and I do think there needs to be a change, and that change could be simply an explicit executive order saying we will use current market value from this point forward. That would be a simple step that would really make things a lot easier for folks.
Andy, a question. I mean, is there anything that we can do as, you know, as a zoning board of appeals to make that an obvious opinion of us? Because quite
When we pass something at the end, we can make that statement precisely. I mean, we do have to make a decision at some point, right? And when we do, we can add that language too.
We do have one other from the public that would like to speak, and then it looks like that's the last hand up.
You go ahead.
This is Georgie. Just state your name and address and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, my name is Georgie Farrar. I live at one sixty-four Gregory Boulevard. I'm new to this process. So this rule is definitely affecting me. I would love to see a change in the current market value or the current market, market value be applied. You know, this rule is extremely limiting and it's basically unfortunately making me like to the point where my house is just like a land grab at this point, you know, because I'm not allowed to do any sort of improvements. I don't have any, you know, so I don't know, this is definitely changing, like Nora said, the landscape of like these waterfront communities, but it's, um, it's not really fair. I don't think that, you know, we're kind of being outpriced, you know, outpriced from this market. I don't know. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm not a good Zoom talker or meeting person. But I definitely would like to see this, this code change. I think that it's just not current and not really fair to some of these, you know, people in our situation. And anyway, you know, we pay current taxes. I think, you know, our property should be current as well. And, you know, there's construction costs. If, if this rule is going to be applied, then I guess construction costs, we should be given the construction cost from nineteen seventy-eight or pay taxes from nineteen seventy-eight. You know what I mean? Then maybe we could do the work that needs to be done, but it's very concerning. Like I need new windows. Like what am I supposed to do? I need a new roof. You know, what am I supposed to do? I can't afford a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to raise my house. I just want to make simple, safe changes.
Are you in a flood zone? Let me ask you a question. Are you in a flood zone?
Yes, I'm in an A
Oh, you are? Okay. Yeah, your, your interpretation is correct. You'd have to be in a flood zone for this to apply, however.
Yes, I'm in a flood zone. So this rule, I'm left with this. I have a current, I think I have fifty thousand dollars that I'm allowed with the substantial improvement allowance, and it's not really enough. It's not enough to do my windows, my roof. You know, a kitchen renovation, things that I want to do with the permit without filling in my basement or raising my home. I live in a twelve hundred square foot home. You know, I have three kids. We're just trying to, you know, get by and keep our house presentable in the city of Norwalk. And with this, we're not able to. It's really sad. And basically, you know, I'm left with, if this happens, I'm going to have to sell my house or somebody's going to buy it. You know, that has the financial resources and just raise it. And it's just going to change this neighborhood that we're living in. You know, I moved here because it's eclectic and it's great. It's old Norwalk. It's new Norwalk. You know, there's old people, there's young people. It's very diverse and I love it. And it's just going to change this landscape here tremendously. It's going to be, you know, just for, you know, people that can buy or build, you know, a two million dollar home and raise it. And it's just not, there's no it's going to limit diversity here too and push people out of the neighborhood that deserve to be here.
Yeah, we, we have dealt with the issue as did the Z E O make an error, did not make an error. I think she didn't make an error, but I don't disagree with you that the application of the regulations seems unfair and not an appropriate thing and needs to be changed ASAP.
Well, especially if we're paying current taxes, you know, bring our taxes back to nineteen seventy-eight. Or, you know, with that fifty thousand, then give us the construction costs and building costs from nineteen seventy-eight. You know, it's just, you can't, I just don't understand how we are not able to put a roof on our house or windows.
I don't want to get into the weeds on this, but it wouldn't necessarily be nineteen seventy-eight. It would be the first instance of a change to the structure.
Correct.
Was in seventy-eight, then yes, it's seventy-eight.
Correct. That's my case.
Anyway, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Michelle?
That was the last hand up, so I think we're good.
Okay, I haven't heard anybody argue some other case other than was there an error or not an error? Liz is still with us, I think.
I am.
Hello.
Okay. Um, is there somebody I
Number eight, Shore Avenue? Is that the right number?
No, no, we're, we're not on that particular case just yet. Liz, did you want to, um, don't repeat everything, but if you have a particular point you want to make, having heard everyone.
Just one final statement. I think everything has been said that will be said. I wanted to make one clarification for everyone. The decision to apply prior market value was not a decision that Tammy Maldonado herself suggested or decided. As I indicated in my letter to you on May thirteenth, a determination had been made at some point after superstorm Sandy by the staff. It was not Tammy Maldonado's decision alone. It was a staff decision. And again, my comment to you is that that staff decision and its application and implementation today is what is an error. It should be current market values as had been applied in the past with all those prior permits and not the market value that was established with a prior zoning approval permit dating back some ten, twenty, or thirty years. The only other, I suggest, the only other thing I'd like to add is that I, I believe that there is, is a significant disconnect between what had been done, what is being done now to the detriment of property owners and property owners and their neighbors. It's, it's, there's a disparity in how applications had been, how this had been applied and what the end result was. And so I, I would, I would like you to uphold the appeal so that my clients can move forward with the, the with their concept with having the opportunity to spend up to seventy-five thousand. But if not, as I suggested, I think you should, I, I would suggest and recommend that you send a statement to the planning and zoning commission to include clarifying language and codifying this policy in the zoning rewrite, which is underway today. That concludes any presentation that I have or any further comments, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Liz.
Yeah, I think I want to point out that there are two issues here. One is just the general set of the regulations and how they're followed and what they say. And there is the establishment of the date for creating a market value analysis. And that last thing could be changed by executive order because the staff works for the mayor. And so one could also approach the mayor and say, gee, I think that this thing's gone gawank and it needs to be pulled back in line and made better. And here's one way to do it. So I think maybe we could do that as well. And I, I don't agree that Steve Kleppen has mufflers on his ears and doesn't want to hear this. I think that he probably would take it in stride and try to work with it. So I'm hoping that we would see some change promulgated in the near future. With that in mind, we need to proceed. We have other things to get done.
Um, Andy, could I have just a moment to, just a few, a brief few minutes, please? Thank you. So I'm Tammy Maldonado, zoning enforcement officer. Thank you to Liz Sachi for pointing out that this was not a unilateral Tammy decision. Um, when I came into the department five years ago, I, I came shortly after Steve Kleppen joined the department and then Michelle and Jeski, who's host and also a senior planner is on this meeting as well. So we're the little baby staff members who, who came in after staff members had been here for twenty or more years. They are the ones who trained us and, and guided us on how the, the flood regulations work. The, the crux is that nowhere historically has either the market value definition or the substantial improvement definition said current. It's always said initial. So, and I would point out that the last speaker, Georgie from Gregory Boulevard even noted, I quote, I like to see the code changed. So, I mean, I think we've, I hope made it very clear that it's, while there may have been inconsistencies in the past, the you know, as far as long as I've been here and, and Steve, and then at least several years before that, so eight, nine, maybe ten years. This has been the methodology using the, as the definition, definition states, the market value based on the initial repair or improvement. Like it or not, it does make me super unpopular.
Let's just make it clear, there's a trigger date, and that is when that first improvement's made after
It's not compliant, correct.
And if that was in nineteen seventy-eight, then that would be the year.
Correct. Now, there have been
One, then that would be the year.
Right. There have been text amendments, you know, the most recent was in twenty nineteen to the flood regulations, which just had some, not regarding substantial improvement, but had some clarifying language about how high improvements or new construction had to be elevated. In twenty-ten, there was a text amendment to change from a ten-year reset to the look back from the original implementation of the flood regulations, which were in nineteen seventy-eight. If you apply a current market value, if that is the text, potential text amendment that is given presented to the planning and zoning commission to change the regulation, then you're going to have a Then you're going to have a constant reset by default, because every time you do an improvement, your value is going to go up, and you will continue. To just move the goalposts. Um, and one additional comment I wanted to make was, um, the. Files that we pulled per Miss Sachi's request for your request for review after the Superstorm Sandy. Were mostly repaired to damage from the storm. You know, maybe there was, I don't know, I wasn't on staff at that time, but maybe there was some.
Do not want to dissect us any further.
Okay, sounds good, thank you very much.
I think we're good, and the question was, did you make a mistake or didn't you, and and in my view, and my only. One person of five, is that you did not make a mistake. And do I think that this is a good regulation, no. And as the manner of interpretation of how to set the the market value, a good thing, no. There are other communities nearest that do it differently, and we should look at them as well. So with that in mind, we probably need to wrap on this item and move forward with the rest of the agenda. Is there anybody that objects to that? Hearing no objection. Uh, let's move forward and we'll, unless somebody wants to vote on the appeal and then move forward, you tell me that. Because I'll go either way.
I think we should vote on the appeal.
Well, we will eventually, do you want to do it right now?
I wouldn't mind, I think it's a, it's gonna be some discussion, so, yeah.
Better to do it, and it appeals different than dealing with the variants. Uh, Lee, you ready to vote?
I am ready to vote, I've lost my video, but I'm ready to vote.
I see you, don't, don't do anything weird there.
Okay.
All right, so with that in mind, Danielle, are you ready?
Yep.
All right, and Tom is ready, Marilyn is ready, Andy's ready, so. Um, the motion can be made by me or by Lee or anyone else, I'm ready to make one if you want it. Lee, you want to make it?
I will make a motion that we. Deny. This application for appeal and. Advise the applicant that they. Work with Planning and Zoning Commission to change the regulations, I don't believe, well, that's enough.
And I make a friendly amendment that the board itself make a recommendation that the. This particular section of the code be updated, and particular attention paid to the date that is applicable. To the market value with evaluation.
I agree.
Okay, so that is the motion, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand, so I can see you.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, so it is.
Right, Andy?
It is unanimous, so the appeal is denied, but we do make that recommendation, and I see Stephen is with us, so. He knows exactly what we've recommended, and I think Liz also. On the, for her client.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for attending, Liz.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Secretary, if you can't see us, we can see you.
Okay, I do not have the, I've got every piece of paper relating to Shaw Avenue. I do not have the statement regarding the zoning analysis, but.
Yeah, I do, give me just one second.
Oh, okay, I'll let you read it then, thank you.
Don't worry about it. This is bad.
Sorry about that.
People are losing, you can hear that, I'm not the only.
Um, so, this is.
We have anything unusual going on that people are being bothered by, or what's going on?
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened. Am I okay to go?
Yeah, I believe so, and so if you're not needing to talk right now, let me make a suggestion that you mute yourself, and then we'll listen to Tammy.
Okay, so this is staff memo, item twenty two zero three one seven dash zero two, Maryland Bavona. Variants to allow parking within the front setback, section one eighteen twelve twenty J. At existing single family residence in B resident zone. Property located at H Shaw Avenue, District Five, Block Seventy Four, Lot Fifteen. Request, applicant seeks variance to keep the existing driveway configuration, although it does not provide zoning compliant parking. Background, this single family home was built in nineteen forty, it previously contained an integral one car garage. That was at some point altered without permits to living space. In twenty nineteen, permits were issued for addition of a bathroom, and it was noted on the permit the driveway may need to be altered prior to certificate of zoning compliance. Post-construction zoning inspection confirmed there was not a compliant parking space, and therefore certificate could not be issued. Analysis and findings, although the current homeowner was not responsible for the conversion of the former garage. This should still be considered a self-created hardship. There is possibility of creating a compliant parking space by either restoring the former garage space. Or installing a new driveway on the other side of the dwelling, removal of the existing driveway. Excuse me, and restoration to landscaping would be required for the latter option.
Thank you. Andy, you need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, who's who's up, and who's speaking for the applicant?
Attorney John Vecchiola. You're muted, John.
John, you're muted, you got, you mute yourself.
I lost my, uh, lost my voice, I could see you, but I couldn't hear you. Uh, so, well, good evening, I'm Attorney John Alvecchiola, and with me this evening is Mrs. Bavona and her husband. She's the applicant and an owner of H Shaw Avenue in Norwalk. Uh, she's seeking a variance of her existing driveway. Um, and this matter was continued from the March seventeenth hearing to allow us. To have a paving company visit the Shaw Road prop, Shaw Road property. Uh, P and S Paving, uh, which has an office in Norwalk, visited the property. And gave an estimate for relocation of the driveway to the Westerly property line with the vignette. Um, and I submitted prior to this application, prior to. Um, the meeting in April, a copy of the P and S paving. Uh, proposal, um, and. P and S paving had the following concerns, that would indicate this area was not feasible. Uh, for the implementation of a new driveway. For the following reasons, they note on their. Uh, proposal that the. Driveway would be over an existing sewer line, and in their opinion, that's not safe. And the other area in which they. Stated that. The property drops off between the Pavona and the Big No property. It's two to three feet, and it increases as you go along the property line, and in the beginning, there is a stone wall. Um, that is unstable, and they indicated that this wall will not. Support this, a new driveway. Uh, the wall is owned by the adjoining property owner, Mr. Vigno. And I spoke with him this, yesterday morning, and he allowed me to. Uh, take pictures from his property of the stone wall, and. Um, I was wondering if somebody could share that with with the board. And I have the three. Three exhibits. And the first one that I would like to show you can, is the wall, that is. The the, the three pictures that are up are. Will show the vegetation and the trees that would have to be removed. Uh, to, uh, to install a new driveway. But if you go down a little more, maybe you'll see the other pictures of the the rock wall and the obstructions. Um, on the area. Can you find the, find the stone wall? Yeah, that's it, that's it, perfect, if you go down, you can see on the top one. You can see that it is basically just rocks, there's no, um, there's no cement or anything to. Support it, and you can also see as you go along the property line, the topographical. Of change in the division line between the two properties. Um, so I would use that one of the reasons is not only the. Non-able to support a driveway because of the rock wall, but also it's a topographical hardship. And then I'd like you to go to the next. Series of photographs, if you can. Thank you, Michelle, this would be the area where the proposed driveway is, and if you look at the second photograph. Uh, you'll notice there's a bay window and the HBA system, HBAC system. Um, which, it it, which cannot really be moved because of its proximity. Uh, to various lines and to other utility. Utilities, and you can see that there's a gas meter also there, and if you drop down one photo. You could go up. This here is a shed, but there's a door here, and that's how you go to the basement. Um, if the drive, and the driveway would come near here, uh, and an automobile that was stopped at the end here. Um, uh, the passenger side would not be able to get out, to exit the vehicle, uh, because there would be no room. The measurement for. The proposed driveway is eleven feet, approximately eleven feet, so, um, I believe Mr. Levy had mentioned that in the last. In the last hearing. I'm going to be very brief, we got a long evening. Um, and I just really like to recap. Um, in conclusion. Uh, in conclusion, this property was developed. Uh, in nineteen forty, that's eighty two years ago. Um, driveway on the eastern side has existed for eighty two years. The driveway on the easterly side is very conforming to all other driveways along Shaw Avenue, they're all about the same size. Um, it is clear. That granting this variance will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. Or will granting the variance change the character of the neighborhood? The driveway will continue to remain in its present location as it has for the last eighty two years. I would also like to say, I don't know if Mr. Vigno is on, he said that he was going to call. But he explained to me that he was opposed to the location of the driveway to his side of the property. So, um, we do have, uh, we do have, I believe. Uh, areas of disagreement that A, we have a non-conforming use. B, the property has been there for more than eighty two years. The exists, the proposed driveway location is impacted by the sewer line. Topography and a stone wall that may not be as stable as it should be. Um, and opposition from, from a neighbor. So I would ask the board that you grant this variance. Um, if you would like to condition it, if you're concerned about safety. Um, because of the driveway and near, uh, uh, near the. Garage, where the garage was, we'd be willing to put in a fence, or we'd be able to put in a stone, some kind of stone barrier. So that there would be no problem, but. Uh, right now, I can tell you, you can get easily three cars in that driveway. Uh, and no necessity for for parking on Shaw Avenue. So, um, I thank you for bearing with me, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to. Uh, answer them.
Anybody on the board have a question?
Yes. Is it true that the garage was converted to living space without a building permit?
It appears so, Mr. Levy.
Okay.
There's no building permit, so.
Would your, has your client made any steps to legalize that space?
Technically, I would say that Mr. Levy, no, but she became aware of it after. Uh, she had the final inspections and the zoning enforcement officer came out. Uh, for the CFO for the bathroom in the rear.
Would she be willing to file for a building permit and play, pay the application fee?
Yes, she would.
I'm just looking for conditions.
So I would have to interject that if they applied, we would say they they would need to provide. Uh, zoning, uh, one compliant parking space to get, in order to get the building permit, they'd have to get the zoning permit first. And we're aware of the.
They do, you can put three cars on that driveway.
That's within the front setback, so technically you don't provide the required, at that time, it was one parking space behind the front setback. Um, the garage provided that space, and that's why we said.
I think every, anyone on that road would have the same problem. It's, it's, it's a.
They did not do home improvements without a permit.
Well, I understand, and I agree with you.
We very.
I agree with you.
Time out, time out, John.
Yeah.
You're looking for a variance. That variance, um, I think it should be as minimal as possible, but still achieve the ends that the homeowner would like. Tammy, is there a width difference between what they're asking for and what would still accommodate two cars in the front setback?
So they don't need two, they just need one behind the front setback, that's why I thought perhaps. It would be, you know, at this time, when I, when I met with them for the inspection. I thought it would be less expensive to install, now again, this is not for variance consideration. But just to help the homeowner resolve the violation would be to install the driveway at the, you know, opposite side. And maintain their living space, because I think to convert the garage, in my opinion, would be more costly. Um, to, I mean, to convert, to reconvert the garage space to provide that. One required zoning compliant parking space would be more costly than to install a secondary driveway. They would also have to remove portions of the driveway that lead up to the, what was the former garage, because. That, that is the, that is the nature of the violation, it creates parking within the front setback.
Alright, so what would your recommendation be, just so I'm clear, because actually, I I thought I knew what it was, but.
Sorry, the draw, install a secondary driveway, remove the former driveway, and restore that to landscaping.
Right, but right at the setback where they need the variance to be able to do that. Not, not on the side of the house where the recommendation is not to put a driveway there.
Well, that that recommendation is arbitrary, I I, you know, I. I forwarded, I think I sent you the email as well from the permit coordinator in Department of Public Works, who issues all the driveway permits, and he said. They would be able to go over a sewer line, they do have the width, they only need to provide. One parking space beyond that front setback. And they've got the width between the existing air conditioner and shed and bay window.
And and all I say is, the shed is the stairs to the basement, you can't move those.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm not, I hope you need to move them, that's what I'm saying, you've got the distance, you've got, you've got eleven feet. Between the surveyor notes, eleven feet between the the most, you know, uh. The closest limit to the property line, to the side property line.
Well, we have a neighbor who's, in all due respect, we have a neighbor who's who's objecting, and he said he was going to be calling, and I didn't. I don't see him online.
He provided a letter of support, saying, you know, he wanted the board to grant variance, Mr.
Yes, but he said he did also, I think he said on that, he didn't want it on his side.
But that's not his.
And we have an unstable, we have a topographical drop off. And the the support for his property, and he owns the wall. Will will not supposedly not support.
Do you have an engineer's report for that?
Well, it's not my client's. Well, it's not my client's wall. Okay.
Well, I mean, but the supposition is that the the ground is then going to collapse if you install a driveway. Is that?
You, yes, yes.
And I would say that would require an engineer's determination, not a paving company.
I wish Mr. Vigno had called in because he had. He was very vocal on this on this issue. But I'm really not going to argue with you. Everybody's got same positions and I I actually believe. That. This application. Requires a variance and it's is supported not only by. By the problem with the relocation driveway. But you have an area developed prior to existing zoning regulations. You also have.
I beg to differ zoning was in effect when this house was built. It doesn't predate zoning. So don't tell me that.
Well, it predate. If you look at when the regulation that we are looking at. What is it? Eight one eighteen dash one one two two zero J. I think that was adopted in two thousand five.
Okay, but this house does not predate zoning.
Well, it's not except.
John, you're you're ignoring a big piece of this, which is converting the garage into living space.
Correct. I know that's a problem.
We're not. We're not waving a wand here, making that go away. Right, still not permitted. And I think even if we were to grant the variance, unless we had as a condition that the permit be taken out, fees be paid. I don't think we're getting anywhere. And I don't think we're going to wave a wand and just say, hey, we're just going to ignore it. That's not going to happen, John.
Mr. Conroy, I think your. Condition would be is acceptable. If you want to grant the variance and make that a condition. We will do it.
Well, I'm familiar with the neighborhood. I drove around there and there are quite a few differences in how. Driveways are set up. And matter of fact, the entirety of Norwalk is barriers as how driveways are set up. But at one time, one of our board members explained to me angrily. That his friend tried to put in a circular drive and couldn't because they're not permitted. And then I went around into my neighborhood and his and counted twenty circular drives. So. Yeah, it's pretty obvious driveways are have over time become things that they're not supposed to be, and we really do need to regulate them. But we can also vary them when it makes sense. In this case, I think it could, but the problem is initially created by changing the garage to living space.
Fair, fair comment. Fair comment. And I I did notice I did notice that there was not much parking on the street. But I went there on a Saturday, and I also went there on a business day. And I I I didn't see a parking problem. On Shaw on the times I visited. Okay, I can tell you in my neighborhood.
Time out. Let I think you made your case. We've had good interplay back and forth. Do we have other board members with questions? Tom, did you have one? I saw you moving around. Okay. Anybody else? Is there anybody in the public that wants to speak in support of this application? Michelle, you still with us?
I'm here. It looks like we have no hands raised, so I think.
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak against? And again, you're going to tell me you don't have any hand.
Correct.
Okay, so with that in mind, there's really no need to rebut. I think we could close this and move on to a vote later.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, good evening.
Be a little later.
Okay. Moving on. We have item. Two, two dash zero, five, one, nine dash oh, one. Sadita family to LLC at all. Variance to allow parking within the front setback. Section one, one, eight dash one, two, two, zero, J. Compact size in loose standard size parking spaces. Section. One, two, three, zero, B. And relief from required backup aisle dimensions. One, two, three, zero, D, one. To create two off street parking spaces. On the nonforming lot in B residence zone. Property located eight Yarmouth District six block thirty six. Lot thirty. Request the homeowner wishes to install. Two off street parking spaces on the property where no. Compliant parking option is available. Background. This home was constructed in nineteen hundred. This home was built before zoning regulations were adopted. And has has several existing nonconformities. Including lot area. With very limited allowed building envelope. Analysis and finding there is not a compliant location for parking on this property. Which is a practical difficulty. The nature of the lot and the year the home was built could be considered zoning hardships for the board to allow installation. Of the two proposed parking spaces.
Do we have somebody representing the applicant?
Me, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Liz. Go ahead.
Good evening again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, meet again. For the record, I'm Liz Sachi at Carmody, Torrance, Sandak and Hennessy, ten fifty five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. And I represent the Sadita family to LLC. President tonight's meeting are members of the family. Robert Sadita, Steve Sadita, and Diane McGill, all of whom you probably can see on your screen. And who are coming to you from various sections of the country. Notification of tonight's hearing was mailed to a budding property owners on or about. May fourth by certified mail return receipt requested. And a packet with the green cards that have been received as of today, as well as copies of letters for which the green cards have not been received. Where it was delivered to planning and zoning this morning and should be part of the official file. As mentioned, the applicant is the Sadita family to LLC. Property is at eight Yarmouth Road. And if I may ask Michelle Andrewsky to call up some of the photos that we have of the site. For those who may not be familiar with it, if she could do that, that would be very helpful. Thank you. The property is bounded to the south by Parkview. Okay. The view that is in front of you, this is a photo. Facing west toward Yarmouth Road from Parkview. You'll note on the right is a approximately two foot high stone wall. The property in question is at the corner of Parkview and Yarmouth, right where the stop sign is. It's interesting to note that those stone walls that appear in various sections of O eight, and some of them date back to the about a hundred years. And you can tell the difference in those that are original. They are rounded stones, many of which were taken from the islands off the coast of Norwalk when Belle Island was developed. Ms. Andrewsky, could you move to the next photo? Thank you. And this is a view facing eastbound on Park. Yeah, eastbound on Parkview. Just another example of the street. The parking is permitted on both sides of the street.
So the the applicant's house is on the left?
No, that's that was beyond the applicant's house. I'll get to the applicant's house photo in just a minute. This is a view south on Yarmouth, facing South Beach Drive. And the applicant's house is to the left on the other side of the sidewalk. And next photo. This is a view of Foster Lane, which is the northern property boundary of the property. My client's property is off site to the right, adjacent to the. Mailbox. One more photo, let's see. This is a photo of my client's property and the area where we are proposing the two compact parking spaces would be. To the left on the adjacent to the side property line. And I think I have maybe one more photo. And again, this is another photo of the existing property. You'll see that there is gravel and some grassy area in front. The area that is at the right of the screen, adjacent to the sidewalk, we would propose to remove the gravel and and. If you grant the variance for the parking, replant that with some grass. And I don't know if there's one more parking, one more photo. Okay. Thank you. And this is a view of the dwelling taken from the intersection of Yarmouth and Parkview facing north. That is the existing structure built in eighteen ninety seven. You'll see the two foot or so stone wall that surrounds the front of the property. And the sidewalk that travels up Yarmouth Road along the western property line all the way up to Foster Lane, which is on the other side of the house. That gives you an idea of the the location of the property, the vicinity and the general neighborhood.
Leave leave the photo up for a second. That intersection is a really busy intersection, particularly on weekends.
Yes, it is.
Because people come up to the stop sign and hang a left or sometimes to try to beat other cars go straight up Yarmouth. And then you have traffic frequently coming from the right. So that's that's a real doozy.
And when cars park on either side of Parkview and they park on the eastern side of Yarmouth, it's very congested. And and that's one of the reasons why my clients have approached this board with a request for the variances in order to create two off street parking spaces to make it a little less congested. And improve maneuverability and safety in this general area. So as as the indication from the zoning enforcement officer's memo, the lot is undersized. Instead of it being six thousand two hundred fifty square feet, it is four thousand five hundred forty. There is a preexisting legally nonconforming structure. It also fronts on three streets, Parkview and Parkview, Yarmouth and Foster Place. Perhaps Ms. Andrewsky could screen share the zoning location survey. And as you'll see on the zoning location survey. It Yarmouth is on the west, Foster Place is on the north, and Parkview Road is on the south. In accordance therewith, there are three setbacks. In addition, this lot is considered a through block, and it has a therefore has a thirty foot setback under current zoning from Foster Place. And a thirty foot setback from Parkview Road with a thirty five foot setback from the center line of Yarmouth Road. Making the development envelope or the compliant location for either structure or parking within that. Within that dotted line, which generally is occupied by the entirety of the house. You'll also notice from this plan that the property, the elevation changes dramatically from Parkview. Up to Foster at a differential of about ten feet. And within the interior of the lot, the elevation differential is anywhere between is about four foot differential from beginning of the house to the rear of the house. There is no off street parking for this property. There are generally no no off street parking spaces for properties on Foster Place with the exception of our neighbor across the street. At ten Yarmouth. Many of the properties homeowners on Parkview also do not have off street parking spaces. As you know, Belle Island was created as a summer colony and as properties near the water became more valuable and desirable. The dwellings became year round residences. Many of the properties that exist in Belle Island are on undersized lots. Many also do not have off street sufficient off street parking. So my my client is not obligated to provide off street parking since the lot and the dwelling predate zoning. However, it would like my clients would like to create spaces that they can use and not be violative of the zoning regulations. So we came up with this plan, which was an outro of conversations we had with Miss Maldomoto. We had a different configuration that frankly would have. Used up most of the space between the Foster Place property line and the house. And the spaces were configured differently. They were full size parking spaces. And in discussions with staff, it appeared that this was a better use of the property. And a better way to create two conforming parking spaces and also then be able to. Recreate some lawn area in that northwest corner, which is currently stone and gravel. So the application before you seeks variances in three ways. One is to allow compact parking spaces, two of them side by side. On the eastern border, which is shown on the map in the northeast corner of the property. Compact parking spaces are not permitted for single family dwellings. So that is one variance. The second is that, as you can see, the front setback would extend thirty feet in from Foster Place and anything that goes within this. Area that does not is not occupied by building requires variance. So we're asking for variance to allow those two spaces to be located within the front setback. And then also clearly, there's no ability to have a twenty four foot backup aisle from these any of these spaces. Given the narrowness of the. Distance between the edge of the house and the property line, which is approximately nineteen feet or fifteen point five feet from the roof overhang of back door. And the property line. We believe that the all of the 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 topographic constraints, the size of the lot. And the location of this historic house all suggests that those are practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships. That my client cannot overcome. And the idea of creating two off street parking spaces, I believe, is a benefit to this neighborhood. And the variances that are sought would be able to achieve that goal. To date, I received one inquiry from a neighbor across Foster Place at number eight Yarmouth and number ten Yarmouth. And this map was shared with that neighbor, and I believe that neighbor has sent. Has subsequently discussed the plan with Miss one of the Saditas. And has sent a letter of support. And in addition, a property owner who owns number one and number three Foster Place, which is slightly down the road, has also submitted a letter of support. I think all, as you know, variances. Can be granted by this board upon a demonstration. Of practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship created by the strict application of the regulations to a particular piece of process property. When the request is in harmony with general purpose of the zoning regulations so that substantial justice is achieved. And to secure the safety, public health and welfare of the community. And I think the creation of these two parking spaces does exactly that. And certainly responds to the comment that Mr. Conroy made about congestion and. Issues in at the intersection of Parkview and Yarmouth. We would hope that the. The reason rationales that we've just suggested would be sufficient for you to deem it appropriate to grant the variances. And we hope that you will be able to do so this evening. One suggestion that we discussed with staff was, well, what about trying to put parking spaces underneath the dwelling? That would require us to elevate the dwelling, which is already three and a half stories. Which then would likely require a variance of number of stories possibly height. And it's it's not certain if that structure could even be elevated, given its age. Moreover, that would require a curb cut from Parkview Road and into that historic stone wall. Which would change the aesthetic and the look of that entire streetscape since no other properties on that street have driveway cuts. Or curb cuts into those stone walls. So we would hope that you would you would find the reasons that we have suggested. Sufficient enough to grant the variance and allow us to create those two compact parking spaces in the northeast corner of the property as depicted on the zoning location survey. I'm happy to answer any other questions, and I'm sure Robert or Steve or Diane would be happy to answer your questions as well.
Yeah, who's ever putting this up on the screen? Leave it up for the question period. Anybody on the board want to ask a question about this?
Of course. Is, I mean. With compact parking spaces. What would prohibit? An owner. From buying a Chevy Suburban and parking it there. Sticking out into Foster Place and essentially blocking it.
Well, quite honestly, they could do that today, but the residents on Foster are. As best I can tell, very vigilant about maintaining that roadway as an open roadway because it all it does provide access to certain interior lots.
Yes.
To the back of other homes there. And I don't I don't think there's ever been an issue that the Sadita family has experienced or others on that roadway have experienced. Whereby that Foster Place has been blocked.
Second question relating to those parking spaces. Did? Anyone attempt to lay out maybe in a parking lot with orange traffic cones? This configuration and try to back a car out of the parking space. Into Foster Place. I don't think that the configuration. Yields itself to being able to get out of the parking spaces.
Yeah, that was my thought too, looking at it. It's like you could probably.
Yeah, that was my thought too, looking at it. It's like you could probably get one angled in there, but you can't really get two cars to function in there.
My third question.
Cars that have the ability to move all four wheels. So who knows?
My third question is, was any consideration made to doing two parallel spaces along Foster Place?
Do you mean rotating the proposed spaces in it, uh, so that they're parallel to Foster or?
Yes.
Yeah, one deep instead of side by side. The orientation would be the ninety degrees from what they are right now.
Just rotating them ninety degrees, um?
Yes.
Well, but then also putting them front to back so that they're in parallel to Foster Place.
I think that would eliminate the ability to then create that corner of a more, um, landscaped area. That was one of the, the driving factors as well, that in discussions with staff, that was desirable to, to eliminate some of that, uh, crushed stone. But if we, if you're, you're, and then we, we have the, the question of the existing walkway and the roof overhang over the back of the building. So it's, it's a really difficult, um, area to create even these two compact. But if you think that it would, they, they would be better suited by rotating the ninety degrees. So they're side by side, yet parallel to Foster Place. I don't believe that my clients would be, uh, at all adverse to that. The whole goal of this is to create spaces that don't violate zoning. So they have a legitimate right to park the, on this, on this portion of the property. And not be doing so without, um, uh, without the approval of zoning. So if, if it's better, if you think it's better for us to rotate those ninety degrees. So they're side by side, yet parallel to Foster. I would suspect that would work.
Yeah, I, I think Danielle and Lee both have better understanding than most people. Whether you could get a car in and out and I agree with them. Four wheels that move, uh, to get it out of there. But even that wouldn't get it out. If, if it was the second car in tucked in against the lot line, you're not getting out of there.
I've actually, I've actually been there, drove past it the other day, and that's a footpath at Foster Place. I mean, all ten purpose, it's, that's pretty where you could take cows or something to pasture. It's very, very narrow.
Yeah.
Um, I'm wondering, is this, is this a home? Is this a business? Is this a, a rental? In other words, if you're granting this variance, do we, will the residents be using this, um, uh, solely or will there be other people there? Will there be ski, jet skis there? I'm just a little concerned about the look and of course aesthetically, I just hate seeing vehicles so close to homes throughout Norwalk on lawns and things like that. And that's what, if you look at the property, it's a beautiful property. But we're trying to squeeze ten pounds of product into five pounds here. And then this is a very, very tough place to get in. Wiggle room is very, very limited here.
Uh, the, the homeowner, the, the, uh, the Sadita family do own it. And they, from time to time, they do come back and spend, spend time at this location. You can certainly put a, a restriction or a condition of approval that if those spaces be granted, they only be used for the purpose for which we've sought the variance and that is for parking of compact spaces. Um, I think the, the benefit of this request is that it takes two cars off the street. Whether that be on Yarmouth or on Parkview, which right now, um, without this approval, they would not be able to legally park on this section of their property at all.
It is, it, excuse me, is this a permitted neighborhood? In other words, you can park on the streets if you have a permit or it's you know, it's whoever comes gets a spot. Because Parkview, it looks to me when I was riding around, it's a legit road with parking spots. And I don't think it'd be a hardship to get one or two cars down there or somewhere. It just to me aesthetically and even zoning wise, it, it, it's a really tough fit in that corner for two cars.
These, the roads around this property, uh, parking is permitted as to whoever decides to park there. There's no permit parking. But one of the, the concerns has always been in Bell Island to try to, uh, uh, try to get at least one space off the street. So that, uh, it, it makes for a, a better maneuverability. Yarmouth Road gets very tight when cars are parked on that eastern side of Yarmouth. Um, and you can come up Yarmouth and you can come down Yarmouth. It's, it's a tight fit.
Yep.
Our thought was that this would be something viewed as beneficial to the neighborhood to at least get two cars, even if they're compact, not parked on the street, make it a little bit, um, better for the, the rest of the cars to maneuver around.
Well, I honestly don't think that, you know, doing compact spaces with, eh, you know, parking large SUVs on them, especially near that porch roof is really gonna work. I think somebody's gonna pull in and smack the house to try to keep the back end of the car Foster Place. That's why I suggested two parallel spaces along Foster. And keep them as far from the corner with Yarmouth as possible.
Well, we can certainly rotate those spaces. There's just enough room with two seven and a half foot wide compact spaces to, uh, be accommodated. So someone could come up, up Yarmouth, make a right onto Foster and then pull into the space closer to the house and the other one closest to the, the roadway. And then they would be able to back out onto Foster and travel back down eastbound toward East Beach Drive.
Exactly.
That would, that would be able to be accommodated and that would, I, I suspect address your concern.
Absolutely.
That could be done.
Uh, Tom, part of the difficulty that I'm aware of and, and sometimes I know the neighborhoods, sometimes I don't. In this case I do. The congestion on Yarmouth is fantastic at certain times of the year. And it is public parking. It is not permitted parking. So as, uh, whoever gets here first with the most is, and you, you've got to be able, if you have a car and you need to keep it somewhat near your house because it may have, you may have to park, uh, a mile away. And that sounds like I'm being ridiculous. I'm not being ridiculous. It is that difficult. Bell Island itself has a bunch of these little trails in it and little warrants that you have to drive in to get to a house and then uh, weird little parking spaces all over the place. Look at an aerial thing. It is, it's, it's an amazing, amazing place.
So it, is there a Solomon, uh, assessment here to do one and move the other one onto the street?
May, may I just say something? I, I walk by there almost every day and I, I agree with what Andy's saying. If they can actually get to, um, compact cars, I mean, I, I, I think it's a great idea. It's very crowded up there these days. And especially since COVID, a lot of, a lot more people seem to have moved in there. There's a lot of construction. But it's crowded. It is crowded and it would, I think it would be, it would benefit the area to be able to have, you know, two cars, two compact cars off. And, um, it's just my opinion.
Well, they're compact, they're compact spots, but they may not be compact cars.
But let me ask you a question. Uh, it, this is, I, I mean, this is on the owner's property. This is just for the Sadita family, is it not? Or this is not becoming, yeah.
That's correct.
It, it's, it's like somebody parking in your, in your driveway. So these are what, what they can fit, I gather, and it, it would be compact. It's not a, a large.
But Marilyn, keep in mind that we really don't make decisions based on it's for somebody's family. Because when we give a variance, it travels with the property regardless of who owns it.
Correct. I, I understand, but it, it's not being, the variance is not being requested as, as public parking. It's being parking for this property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perhaps the photos that I took yesterday morning of the site didn't do the neighborhood justice as, uh, Mr. Conroy and Ms. Altman have suggested, uh, on a weekend, uh, later in the day. Yarmouth Road is packed. Uh, there's a lot of parking on Parkview. And I just happened to be there yesterday morning when it was a little less congested, but certainly in the summer months. It's, it can be difficult to maneuver up and down Yarmouth and getting onto Foster Place with cars parked up to the corner of Foster and Yarmouth. Um, I think this, this goes a long way to alleviating some of that congestion and certainly a benefit to the property owner says they can park close to their home, close to the back door.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the two spaces are, you know, not a bad thing for the community or for the property owners. I think, you know, I just question, you know, can you really, if, if they're configured this way, can it really function as two spaces? Um, and I kind of agree with Lee. They might actually benefit um, the traffic and the maneuverability of Foster Place to, to have them in parallel. Um, but
Yeah.
That's kind of it.
There's a, there appears to be just enough space between the property line and the roof overhang for two seven and a half foot spaces side by side. That seems to be, uh, if we were to rotate them ninety degrees, that would work. And it wouldn't require any additional new variance because we've already asked for parking in the front setback. So that wouldn't be something, uh, that we'd have to return to you or, or in any way alter.
Amy, do you have any comment on this?
Um, so just to clarify, I don't, I don't have control of the screen, but of the survey that was there, but we, we would just be, um, the two, the, the, let's look at this as one giant parking pad for the two spaces. That would be rotated. So that your, your longer end is then parallel with Foster, right?
Yeah. There were two suggestions. One is the one that Liz just made, which is take the two spaces, rotate them ninety degrees, side by side. The other suggestion, which I think was Lee's, but correct me if I'm wrong, was to take them and put them parallel to Foster Place, single car each.
So, so stack them. So make like a, almost ride in Foster Place. I got you. And then one, one, Tom.
Be like a little driveway that would be right next to Foster Place, which would accommodate two cars. What it would look like.
So that would be a problem with public works because they only allow the maximum curb cut is, well, actually maybe this.
Place private? I would think it is, isn't it?
Well, it's, I'm, yeah, it says it's passway, but it's access to other parking, um, other driveways for other properties.
Yeah, but I don't think it has anything to do with DPW. But anyway, maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
Foster is one of those, those odd remnant passways that, uh, to be honest, isn't private, isn't public. No one quite knows what it is. There's another one on the other side of South Beach Drive leaning, leading from Nilkood Terrace. There are a few of these here and there. There's another one off, uh, Rocky Point Road. And, um, I don't believe they're private, um, but they're, they're just passways that gave, that allow access from preexist, in the, this example, Yarmouth over to East Peach Drive.
Well, it takes, if you put them in at a ninety-degree turn, you have to be able to get in. To do that, it would take about the same pad, maybe in a circular setup. But that's the only way you could in, get into the far one. If there was a car there in the, in the one that was closest to Foster. So I almost think parallel is better, don't you, Tammy? Private street or, uh, if it isn't a public street, but an unknown street, I don't think we need to get hung up on that.
Well, that, that, but if they do need public works, I mean, I guess you could grant it based upon getting public works approval for that large of a curb cut. They, their typical curb cut max, they're, they're typical. Their requirement is twenty feet max for the curb cut.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe I could make a suggestion that, uh, if the, if you, if you're comfortable with the concept first of two compact spaces, spaces in the front setback and then no availability for that backup aisle dimension, that, um, we work with staff to come up with the configuration that whether it's rotated ninety degrees or the parallel as Mr. Levy suggested. That we work with staff in whichever one of those works best, that that be the one to be implemented.
I'm okay with that.
The other thing I would suggest, if we're limited to twenty-foot curb cuts, do two twenty-foot curb cuts with the walkway and the mailbox between the two.
Lee, Lee, you can't. DPW restricts curb cuts to fifty feet between the center points of those curb cuts.
I'm just trying to be creative.
Yeah, I know. I got you.
And I, I think we're also trying to keep that tree that's right next to the mailbox. Which is on some photos. So a couple of other things that, um, constraints in this corner. But if you're willing to, if you're comfortable with the, the requests made, I think we can certainly work with staff to come up with uh, the best alternate configuration, which doesn't require additional variances or return to this board for additional action.
Uh, I'm comfortable with it. Uh, the only question I might have is, is if we start rejiggering it and coming up with another design is that we got to make sure that the folks that live on, come in and out on Foster are happy with it. I think the parallel design, um, to parallel to Foster is the better idea. It's less, uh, intrusive to the house as well. There's more distance between the house and the cars.
And allows more maneuverability to get in and out of those spaces.
Absolutely. Even though DPW may not love it, but I'd still think that that would be the objective is to get something like that. But um, you're right, it would require some work and whatever you end up with, you got to make sure that, uh, the locals are happy.
Andy, that's an excellent point. So I would, I mean, I don't like to drag things out, but I think we did have two letters or sorry, three letters of support for this particular configuration. Maybe that changes if the plan, if the design changes.
Right. You have a suggestion?
Well, um, uh, you, you could certainly hold the hearing open. We could take a look at two, the two alternatives. Quickly evaluate and, and although it's not what my clients necessarily, certainly would like to hear tonight, I'm sure they would like a decision tonight.
Well, I gotta tell you, me and Danielle both are good at this. And I think when you have both of them telling you that the setup's not a good idea, then I think we should take a second look at it.
Then if you would hold the hearing open.
Yes, we'll do.
We can, Tam and I can speak further next week. We'll see if we can get DPW to opine as to whether or not they would allow what is, has been suggested. And we can come back to you next month and, and bring closure to this.
But let's do that. But in the meantime, while I'm saying that, I want the board to vote on it. So I make a motion that we leave the hearing open and give the applicants time to consider, um, other setups. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? No nays? All right, unanimous. Uh, it is being left open. We'll see you again. I may not be there, but we'll see you again next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up. We're gonna run out of time, so we got to move this along.
It's after nine thirty. Do we have to vote to hear another item or?
You mean I can't be a dictator?
We could be quick.
Gosh, that's a big question, isn't it?
Uh, I, I think when we bring people to a meeting and the expectation that they're going to be heard, I think we should hang around another ten, fifteen minutes and get it done. What, everybody agree? Or anybody not agree? Uh, we're cool. All right, let's do it. Let's move on it. Lee, read it. Can't hear you because you're muted, Lee. All right, start again.
Item two-two dash zero five one nine dash zero two. Trevor and Hannah Stainco. Variance for the number of stories, three and a half stories proposed, two and a half stories maximum allowed for single-family dwelling, proposed to be raised to make flood compliant in B residence zone. Property located at seventy-four Roten Avenue, District Six, Block Nine, Lot Thirty-Five. Request, the applicant seeks variance to allow an additional story to accommodate a house raised to make the structure flood compliant. The resulting foundation level would be flood-vented and used for vehicle and household storage only. Background, this home is a single-family residence originally constructed in nineteen fifty-one. It is not currently compliant with FEMA flood hazard zone requirements. Analysis and finding, the purpose of the FEMA flood hazard zone regulations are to ensure that all structures in a flood zone are adequately constructed to withstand a coastal flooding event. The proposed height of the structure is compliant with the maximums allowed. In the past, the board has looked favorably on these requests for relief from both height and number of stories stories requirement for structures that will be flood compliant.
Today, and representing the applicant is, uh, Mr. Chase.
Yes, thank you guys for, uh, staying a bit and hearing us. Uh, my name is Gary.
Yes, thank you guys for staying a bit and hearing us. Uh, my name is Gary Chase. I am with Christian Gray Studio. We're an architecture firm in Fairfield. And we've been hired by Trevor and Hannah for the project and also representing our application. Trevor and Hannah have lived in the house for about five years now. Hannah was born and raised in Relaton and, you know, they intend on making improvements to their home and growing into it, raising a family. So what I'd like to do is just kind of request a screen share here, just walk you through some drawings. Um, I guess not to request it, I guess I could just take it. So let me just move this over. So, um, can you guys all see the screen?
Yep, yes.
All right. So I'd like to just start with the existing condition site plan.
Remember, uh, Mr. Chase said that I was gonna say that it's pretty tiny, but you made it bigger. Thank you.
Hopefully you guys can read that. So we are 74 Rotan Ave, Rotan Ave to the bottom of the page here. You can see the driveway here, which leads into this existing two-story garage in front. Um, and then kind of an L-shaped configuration is the existing one-story residence behind that. And what I'd like to note here is the existing two-story garage, uh, as kind of highlighted is currently non-conforming with the existing, with the setbacks. Or about 26 and a half in the front, required 30 and then four and a half, five on the side requiring six. If I were to flip over to the proposed conditions survey here, um, what I'd like to note is that garage is being removed, that existing garage is being removed. Um, and the existing L-shaped configuration of the one-story, um, we intend on elevating so that we are flood compliant. Um, and we are adding, um, a second story to the, a second floor to the existing home. What we actually end up with is a slight reduction in, in coverage, uh, believe it or not, due to the removal of the existing garage. And there's a small portion of addition inside that L-shaped where there'll be an entrance and a small expansion of living space. Uh, if I can move into the architectural drawings, this would be the ground level, lower level of the house. This is intended to be used for parking and for storage. Uh, you could see here, we're proposing a two-story, two-story, a two-car garage here um, with a new stair up to the elevated home. Um, and then storage and unfinished space outside of that. And this will be a flood compliant structure. So there's going to be flood vents that'll be installed for, for FEMA regs here. If I can run up to the first floor real quick. Basically, what we're looking to do is give Trevor and Hannah some more efficient use of their space, a bit of an expansion of living space, um, but ultimately more or less staying within the existing footprint, except for this bit of family room expansion. Which my mouse is highlighting in the front there. That's kind of the first floor of the house. I don't think we need to get into too much detail unless there's question. Second floor and attic.
A quick question is you did reduce the, the garage footprint basically by bringing it back?
We, we removed that existing garage completely and I'll show you a photo in a minute. So you get a better visual. So second floor is, this is the added floor of the home, which is going to be, um, the bedrooms. Um, and then up above that is just the remainder attic space that will be under the roof. Um, so that's kind of the, the proposed plans here. I can just to give you some orientation of the, the immediate neighborhood. This would be the neighbor immediately to the left, um, from the street beyond, you can see Hannah and Trevor's home, um, off to the right there. Across the street, um, is this, there's a couple of homes over here, which are two and a half, three stories. Is meant to just give you a sense of the scale on the street. And then lastly, um, kind of a street view of their home. This is the existing two-story garage that's going to be removed in the front. Um, I'm going to go back quick to, I skipped over the elevation. So front elevation of the home. What's noteworthy here, uh, as mentioned, was that we are remaining compliant with our uh, building height, um, or within our allowable there. But because of the raising of the home, what we end up with is a differential of about seven and a half feet between the garage ceiling and average grade. So per Newark regulations, um, anything over three feet triggers that as a story. Um, so that's why we are here kind of seeking a variance. But, you know, we feel like the scale of the home is in keeping with the neighborhood as we kind of looked across the street and uh, to the neighbor. And uh, let's see. So, yeah, to kind of try to, I guess, wrap up. What we see is in con, what I explained in a second ago is just that conflict between becoming flood compliant. Um, but also working with kind of the existing grade of the home. Um, we're really not changing that driveway elevation. Because we want to park below the raised home. So we are kind of in conclusion, improving some of the non-conformities that exist on the height on the site with the setbacks of the existing garage. Um, we are conforming to our building height. Um, we're actually reducing coverage slightly. Uh, so we feel that the, the bulk of the home is in keeping with the regulations, uh, and the neighborhood. So we have flood compliant structure when we are done. We feel that, you know, it's a reasonable, not an excessive design. We're making efforts to try to keep the scale of this thing down. Uh, we do have support, I believe, from, um, the neighbor to the left that I showed a photo of before. And so, yeah, we feel this is a really reasonable request for variance and, um, we hope you guys look favorably and can approve, uh, our request tonight.
Let me ask the other board members if they have questions.
Uh, I really don't. I, I think it's, um, an improvement over what is currently there. And I think it works within the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think so too. I mean, yes, yes, everybody's angry about the houses being kind of taller, but they're in a flood zone and the bottom floor is going to be not there anymore because of, uh, flood potential. Go ahead.
Yeah. And I mean, I think it is worth noting that we, not that we had any intention of growing a huge home here, but there's another 1,500 square feet left in our coverage, um, which could have been, you know, increasing and additions in the bulk of the home. I think we're really trying to just stick to the existing footprint.
Any other questions, uh, for the presenter?
I, actually, I was just gonna ask, so what is the, uh, actual height then? What, what do we, what do you end up with?
Um, the total height is going to be shy of 37 feet, 39 is allowed. Um, the building height is just shy of 31 and 31 is allowed.
Thank you.
Yeah, in terms of looking like the neighborhood, the house to the immediate left, if my recollection is correct, is about this size.
I know, I was, I was, oh, well, I'm over there a lot anyway, but, uh, because I walk there. But, yeah, I had pictures of the houses around.
Yeah. And if, if they can reduce the building structure on the lot, I'm happy about that. Anybody else with a question or comment on the board? If, if there is none, then is there anybody from the public that wishes to uh, speak positively about this application?
No hands?
Michelle, are, are there no hands?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. Let me just formally ask, is there anybody that wishes to speak against this application?
And again, I don't see anybody.
All right. There's nothing to rebut and there's no further questions. So I think we can close this hearing. Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Looking at the agenda. Why don't we move ahead to the board action? Uh, and we do have 21 Sable has been handled. We do have H Shaw to, uh, deal with. Anybody have a motion they want to make on H Shaw?
I will make a motion.
Does everybody remember what H Shaw is?
I will make a motion that we approve the variance request if and when the applicant files for a building permit for the finishing of the garage to habitable space and pays the permit fee.
All right. So the variance would be in place that allows the parking, which is going to be important when they seek permission to make it habitable space because they're going to need the variance to do the parking.
So to clarify, this is to keep the existing driveway, make no alterations and then re, seek and after the fact conversion of the driveway, of the garage, the former garage to living space. Thanks.
And, um, I'm going to add a condition. Like as long as, uh, Lee allows, the condition would be that there be no creeping forward toward the road of the building. In other words, what's there, there, that's the closest approach to the road that is going to be allowed. Uh, nobody gets to say, well, gee, wouldn't it be nice if we had three more and more feet? Uh, no, that's not going to happen. So the condition is that, that the structure, uh, footprint remains just as it is.
I will agree with you.
And the quid pro quo, and that would be a C of O for them. It's a completed deal and then they get the variance is granted. Is that what it is?
Yeah, that, well, the variance is there when they meet the condition. Yes. Anybody have anything further on that? Either additional conditions or questions or we all set?
I'm good.
Well, if we're all set, um, I'd like to go to a vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All right, it's unanimous approved. Thank you, Mr. Vehicle. Yeah, I know you, you forgot to, you're talking to.
Don't go before, uh, Planning, Zoning Board Appeals anymore. I've been doing, I did it for about 40 some odd years. But I sit on the Greenwich Planning and zoning board of appeals as a member.
I hope we're better than the Greenwich.
I'm a little biased. But thank you very much and have a good evening.
And the next would be Reverend Hannah Stanko's application for 74 Rotan. Do we have a motion? From somebody that doesn't normally make a motion. Go ahead and leap right in there and give us a motion.
I make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And I don't see a need for conditions. So let's just take a vote. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand. And so we're unanimous. Very good. So that takes us A, B, B, C, D, and then we have the
The Minutes.
Yarmouth coming back next month, June. Lee, you're going to see him again.
And I'll deal with it.
Yeah. And then we also have an action on the minutes. Has anybody had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
All right, make a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes as submitted. I found no errors or correction, corrections necessary.
And Marilyn seconds maybe? All right. So all in favor, say aye and raise your hand. All right. Thank you. They're passed. Before we adjourn, I want to make, uh, a change, the way we do the format of the agenda. Where it says action on hearing minutes, I want that to become administrative actions. Sub A, action on hearing minutes. Sub B, um, status of training. And then sub C will be other administrative actions. So when we do elections or any of that other stuff, we can throw it in there. So action on hearing minutes, it just becomes a sub within administrative actions.
No objection to that.
Yeah, thank you. That's one of the things the chairman actually can decide on his own. Without, without. But, uh, I would really want the, our training tracked because unlike the old days where it didn't matter if you're trained or not, in the future, uh, it's got to be two years with in the current period, uh, that you've had the training, four hours, I think it was. And when we established training in the past, everybody thought you wave a wand and boom, you go have training. The folks that provide the training generally have a full calendar and it takes you months to get into their calendar. And then we have to also accommodate our board members. Not every board member can make every date that's available. So that's why the dictator spoke. Thanks. Anybody else have anything for the evening or are we all set?
I'm good.
Something after the, if not tomorrow, I want to just contact you about Sable Street.
Do you want to talk to me about something?
Yeah, about Sable Street, but I think it's, this, uh, has gone.
All right. Um, Lee, Lee will be chairing the meeting in the month of June.
Who do we have coming for sure in June?
I'll be there.
I'll be here.
Tom, Danielle. He will be there for sure now. And Chris says he'll be there. So you could, you could have one dropout sick. I mean, I'm starting to get real worried about COVID and the flu and all that stuff because, uh, let me give you an example. My daughter, my son-in-law and their baby had COVID between one and two months ago. They all have it again.
Oh, my God.
Three, and they have a caregiver and the caregiver's gone. It's the entire household is wiped out. Out on the west coast, my other daughter and her family. We just got, now, so whatever this stuff is now is really very little.
Mask up.
I don't even know that's going to save you. Go get that.
It helps, it helps.
I'll call you tomorrow if you don't mind.
If no one has an objection, shall we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Good night. Thank you all.